Welcome everybody into another backtesting session. As you can see on the bottom, we were starting from Monday, the 18th of July 2022. And we can see that, let me just move, okay. On Monday, we don't have anything really important. Tuesday, same. Wednesday, the same. Thursday, jobless claims. And on Friday, some PMIs. Quite a slow week, I would say. After, I mean, last week, we had some very impacting news. So let's simply trade based on price action and on the volume of the chart. So let's start our minute trip with this New York session. We are having these lows and these highs. Let's see the direction of the market. Yes, so far, the lows have been respected. Price is pushing up any retest of these lows. Or even these lows. Sorry. These lows can be the trade idea. As you can see, we can, we want to place this. Take this trade over here. Let's see now if it continues up. No, this time is a loss and that's okay. So yes, that's a loss. Now let's see for the price action. Okay. Yeah, we add a retest of this level again. We might, we might want to take another retest anticipation of the rotation bullish over here. Not strong volume is not like we are in a really in a strong trend. So we're kind of betting on the start of the trend. So let's see if there's enough volume. It's a Monday, yeah. And there's actually a winning trade. Okay, very good. This trade was very unlucky, I would say. The entry got stopped out probably by one or two pips. But yeah, that's, that's part of the game. So now let's continue. We might have a retest of these lows, of these highs in continuation or directly the breakout of these highs. Yeah, we could have taken simply trading the setup. Maybe we take this buy and that's a loss, obviously. Now let's see if we have now a full correction. Especially if now we are creating the market structure and now we break a retest on the downside. That's where we might take the sell. Of course, not happening yet. Let's see, we know these lows. Wow, that's a, that's quite a big hero, I would say. Yeah, and let me just check. Let's see the possible further perception. We are coming at the 10 AM candle, not a lot of volume. And but let's see if we are actually, we can have a candle closing over there for a retest. For example, this candle might be our trade idea, high risk high reward, third trade idea. Yeah, also the other one. Around 20 pips in profit, breaking a test in these lows. So far, we have free range. We only need price to go to these lows for us to be profitable. That's not where I wanted, but yeah. Looks like it goes. Yeah, I should check it. Yeah, it definitely goes. So that's a profitable day. Two losses, two wins. Remember that with a three to one risk to reward, that's a great, great winning rate. 50%, it's absolutely awesome. Let's continue with Tuesday. Okay, so the 19th coming from New York already price is very bearish, I would say. So I want to see, we might have minor PSAs, but I don't expect the New York volume to really have issues breaking above. So I will not use them as relevant PSAs. These might be the possible rejection area. So yes, I would love to, to see now the perception. Might take buys above this level. Now let's see. Okay, first rejection. Let's see if we break below or we actually break above. Now, as you can see, we are creating these PSAs. So now we might have a break a retest of these highs. So yeah, let's see if we have this price action. These lows don't really matter in the lower timeframe now. Okay, if we want to take high risk, I would, even though it's low volume. This part of the session is still a low volume. So it's quite risky to take this trade. It will be in anticipation of the continuation up. Let's see how it goes. So it actually so far, so far it goes around 30 pips. A little bit of drawdown, let's see if we have a continuation up. Now looks like we actually go into a loss. As you can see, not much volume. So not much energy brought into the charts from this, from this trade. And now we might be staying below the last lows and possibly see a continuation down. Now, for example, what I would love to see is this one to go back to red, for example. And we want to see these lows being broken. But still with such a slow volume, we are ready after 10 AM. I'm not really looking for a trade, but let's see if we have some stronger perception. No, so yeah, nothing really happening. These will probably go into profits, as you can see, this entry. But yeah, unlucky. I mean, I'm not really sure if that's a loss. I want to check it actually. The entry is over, is over here. 11. Yeah, it's not, it's not reaching 9.5, which is 15 pips. Right? Yeah, it's not reaching it. So that's actually still okay. And goes to 14.5, which is 35 pips. I'm not sure if that's going to be a win. Just give me a few seconds and I will check it with the broker. So as you can see, this would be on the actual broker, the entry would be exactly over here. So we can see that it will only be like 11 pips of drawdown at these lows. 36 pips, let's see if it will actually go into profits. 42 pips. And then probably into, I mean, yeah, probably this one. Let's count it as a break even, shall we? Because probably after a couple of hours, I'm not sure if I would take it at a break even or at 40 pips. Yeah, I'm not really sure, but it's going too late and not really. I would not be really interested in staying at it with the risk of a stop loss. So that was Tuesday, very slow, not much happening, not a lot of trends going on. Now we're coming into Wednesday, the 20th of July. Nothing. So now let's see, the PSA is the same. This last highs, we might have a bounce from these highs, but I'm not really touching it yet. Probably we are going to create some market structure if we want to continue down. So I'm not going to consider these lows, but I will consider the next ones. If you're going to have it, like for example, these lows. Okay, now we are breaking below. Slow volume, if we simply want to take entries simply for the sake of it. I mean, look at this last 10 minutes or something. That's not really the perception that you want. And that's why you don't really have, there isn't really for me a reason to take an entry. I would absolutely take this loss. I mean, I think it's a loss because this one now there's volume, there's volatility, there's direction. And that's the break a retest. Yeah, that's, that would be a loss and that's okay. Now I would want, I would have wanted to see the retest of these lows to take an entry. Price didn't give me. So now let's see for the price action and market structure for me for the possible continuation down. Okay, yeah. For example, any of these entries. Yeah, we'll see go to into a very slow volume, not really perception or really garbage. Yeah, anyway, yeah, if that, if that was the case, we would have taken this loss and that's okay. That's simply part of the game. Okay, so what do I do? Okay, I do this and now Thursday, we have the jobless claims coming in. Now New York open. Well, yeah, we don't, it's not really giving us much of a, of a possibility of entering over here. We are still way before the news, but there's a lot of volume in the chart already. This is the A20. We have a break and retest of these lows and these highs. Yeah, okay, now we're coming into the jobless claims showing up with a stronger decrease. I mean, getting much worse. So we might, we are bullish on gold. So I'm not really sure when the news was. So for example, yeah, I would have probably taken these buys above this level. I'm not really sure if that's going to be a win or a loss. Yeah, it looks like it's going to be a win. Okay, that's because the very bad jobless claims means weakness for the dollar. So yeah, we said over here, so this was the trade. Over here, now we might have a retest of these highs. Yes, exactly, as you can see. I mean, we, we are in this trade, so I'm not really taking this trade, but that, that would be the perfect trade. This will have been the high risk high reward trade. And yeah, now what I want to look at is possible break a retest of these highs or these lows. And let's see. Yeah, so we're retest breaking up above these highs. Not really sure that, I'm not expecting the jobless claims to bring that strong crazy volatility on gold. So I'm not really betting on like an intraday that all day we go bullish. It's not like that catalyst, but as you can see, another scalp, it's okay. And still it's not up to me to understand, to decide when the price action will stop. So yeah, that's not really the case. Let's see if you have a retest of these highs or above these highs. So as you can see, price, the price is showing us a bullish trend. We have to ride it even, even though we might face a rejection on here. Yeah, we don't know if it's going to 40 pips or not. We're going to check it later. I'm not really sure if we are going to have another thing where we see it. Yeah, just, no, yeah, I will, I will leave it like that, like that. So now what we see simply from this chart is that we are now breaking below these lows. We might take a retest of these lows exactly. It's already going, yeah, we might take a high risk high reward entry, sell over here. Looks like nice, nice. We wanted to stay below and that will be a win. So that's a very good thing. We know that the price could easily go up. It's not like having this image means that it's meant to go down. Like for example, in the previous one, I showed you that, that was not the case because the price was at the top. This trade idea and then instead of going down, it went up. So that's also why I took the screenshot like this. Now let's see if we have a retest of these lows. Oh yeah, price is simply going crazy ham down, bearish, like 100 pips from my entry. We don't really have any new law. This might be the possible, only possible retest area where we might take our first entry. But with this strong volume, with New York Stock Exchange opening, I think we might also get now a correct bullish correction. So I'm not really trusting these cells, but yeah, it's not, yeah. It's not up to me to take them or not. It's not even, yeah. It's not the setup and oopsie. So, so yeah, now let's see. If we have a continuation now, okay. Now we know that the price might bound from here. I actually don't know, but my price might bounce from here. Yeah, and that will go into profits. Now we might also have continuation above this level. Let's see, do we have a retest? Yeah, no, yes, probably, okay. We want to take this entry. 10 pips of drawdown and then goes into profits. Okay, so we're coming now into the 10 AM candle. We actually saw that the jobless claims are bringing a lot of momentum for, through all the session. Okay, so this is what we already saw, right? We are on the 21st, yes, okay. So this is what we already saw. Now we took, okay, after the exchange, we are now at, yeah. We took now this trade, we already took it. Okay, and it went to 45 pips. Our most recent high would be this level for possible retest buys or any market structure that is going to be formed. Yeah, for example, this entry. I'm not waiting for the retest of these lows, but it might actually decide to go over there. No, it actually goes into profits. That's very good. Perfect. Now let's continue with the last hour of this very busy day. Okay, so ta, 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 we took this one, we took that one. We took this retest of these highs. Right? Yes, okay. Goes into profit now. We might also have a retest of these lows. Last lows for possible continuation down. Yeah, for example, a possible entry over here. Which will be a loss and that's okay. Yeah, actually, as you can see, price bound from these lows, went and retested them. And he actually went into profits, so yeah. You can see that also the testing of the last lows would have been the perfect trade idea. But yeah, now it's getting late and I'm not really trading anymore after this busy, very busy day. So continue with a Friday, I would say. Uh, no, don't tell me that there's more. Okay, I don't really care. Okay, 22nd, which is a Friday. We have an S and P, the PMIs later on during the day. So let's see the start of New York session. The New York session is starting over here. Let's see if we create some market structure, most, more recent market structure with some volume. For example, slow volume, we can see it on the chart already. But we might have a break and retest of these lows or now possible breaking above this order block highs. Still remember that you can see that when there's slow volume like this, then it's very easy that the price, price could very easily go into a, give you a fake out. Because now if the price wants to go up, might need a liquidity grab on the downside before pushing up. And that's where we can, we can trapped, be trapped into a fake out. But let's see, simply the price action. Okay, now it's breaking above. Let's see if we have a retest of these lows. So for example, here, this is the situation. We are coming after the 10 AM candle, after then the 24 hour, I have to take it because that's the trade idea. Retesting there above the order block. If it now simply price was a fake out to grab liquidity, as you can see, also conveniently went over there. And then just breaks below, we take this loss. But if we see the retest, that's when we could take the, the actual sell, if that's the case. Let's see the price action. So far, that would be a lack of 10 pips. And then yeah, it will actually be a loss and that's absolutely fine. We failed to break above and yeah, that's simply, that's okay, that's the case. And let's see now below these lows. Do we have enough volume? Do we see a breakout that is convincing enough for us to take a retest? Not really, I would say that's not really the case. Now I would want to take the, to see a retest of these highs for continuation up. Yeah, we also have the news, which I forgot about it. And we see that some of them are below 50, which is a very, very bad number. Usually 50 is the threshold. One is better manufacturing, but services are very, very struggling and declining. So that's where we have this breakout and retest. I'm not really sure if I want to see a retest now of these lows, of these highs or probably of these ones for the continuation bullish. Yeah, simply price is continuing bullish. Might have a minor retest of these lows. I'm not really expecting to retest these ones or that one. Might go down and retest this one, but yeah, I was simply see the price action. And yeah, doesn't reach it. Yeah, it's tapping, actually tapping my, the top weeks. So when you see the further failure to break, that might be the entry. Okay, it has been tested. I don't know if that's a win. And I think we're going to see it in the next slide with the, the 10 AM candle closing off the Friday. So now let's continue. We had this one, so we took this retest. As we said, so let's see if it at least goes and retests, taps these highs. That is still already a win. Yes, so that's a win. Even if it fails to break out, that's okay. It's not really, doesn't really matter. Now let's, we have these PSAs as a reference. As you can see, price is breaking above. We might want to take further retest of these highs, which will end up being a loss. Okay. Same thing now, I don't really want to have these reference for the sales. I would want to see a retest of these lows for a seller reference. So now let's cancel this and let's look, have a look at this. Yeah, we don't have, we didn't get the full retest. I mean, unless we entered over there, but at this little idea was good. Might actually have given us, yeah, the retest of these lows. But more than these ones, you can see that this is a small PSA, which is, is giving us a little idea. Still don't know if that's going to be a win. So I'm not taking a short win. And so let's see, but that's the setup. Okay, as you can see, I'm even taking a loss. That's okay. Simply that, that's part of the setup. So that's absolutely fine. Now I'm not really sure about what I want to see from the price action. It's not really moving that much. It's a Friday evening after London close. We'll see simply for curiosity if we break below these lows and we have a spike down. Yeah, not really. So that's, that's it for the week. Very good. What we might do is go and have a look at the following week. So the following week is starting from the 25th of July. We have some Chicago Federal National Activity Index, yeah, blah, blah, blah. We have consumer confidence that we don't know. And yeah, we're going to actually use Forest Factory. We have the durable good orders. We have some news, we have the PCE, GDP. Yeah, so it's, it's a little bit more spicy than the last one. So should be good. Just a little break to catch some water and I'm back. Okay, so let's go back. So now we have the consumer confidence over here for Tuesday. On Monday, we don't have anything. It should be already good to go, yeah, 25th. And let's continue from where we left. So news is New York, coming into New York open over here. So so far, we are seeing a contraction over here for possible breakout and explosion on the downside. We might have these last highs as a PSA for possible high risk high reward buys. We are in a very strong bearish trend. So let's simply see what is the perception showing us and the direction that he wants to go. So so far, not really trending. We are sideways, so not really any action to be taken. Coming into New York for our, we are now seeing a breakout and a retest with such a low volume. I'm not really trusting it, this break and retest. Because now, okay, simply liquidity grab, as I said. If it, if the price, if the market wants to go higher, it needs to grab some liquidity. Cannot simply push, but we might have a retest. We don't know that. So we might have a retest of these lows for possible continuation down. Yes, so as you can see, I would have missed the trade if I was trading my opinion rather than simply trading the market. And that's one mistake that I used to make a lot. And that's a very good trade. A slow, slow volume, not really much, but simply playing the trend simply, okay, yeah. If you want, then if you don't want to continue, it's okay. It's not up to me to know. We might have now a retest of these lows. Let's see if we have a continuation down, failing to break up. We only have possible buys, high risk high reward buys over there, but I would not really bother with them. Breaking below these lows would mean possible further sales. For example, like here, as you can see, so far we are coming into a positive, we are, we are in a positive area. So let's see. With the continuation after Italian candle. Which is over here. So as we said, we were looking for sales below these lows. Yes, so for example, this one would have been our entry. Or any retest of that area. As you can see, would be 20, 30 pips so far. Just need a bit, a little bit of a push below. And yeah, one, two, three, like a run over here. We would have our TP. Just have to trust it and yes, simply amazing. So that would be actually a win. Great, good, very good to go, to see. It's late after almost London close, but yeah. We might also have a retest of these lows due to the being late. It's not really the point to taking any trade, any further trade. And let's continue with the following one, which is a Tuesday. We know that at 10 AM candle, we have the consumer confidence already quite a bit of a volume. Was not expecting that. Let's see if we have a retest, not of these highs, sorry. I want a retest of these highs for possible continuation up. Or possible further strong rejection. If I see something strongly bearish, I will then want a retest of these lows. Probably it will give me some further probably opportunities above that. So now let's see if we have actually a retest of my PSA. I don't really want to take it over here, but we could miss the move. We said that we don't have anything, right? Yeah, we early on, we don't have much. So still not really trending. The perception is not really amazing, but since it's also matching the error that I put before, I really want to take this trade. Damn it. That would have been a loss. Okay, now let's see if we break below these lows. I want to see also high risk high reward trade would be at these highs, retesting it. Which is the last lower low. Yeah, not really giving us opportunity, not really giving us the chance to enter and that's okay. Okay, now, now we might have, we might be tempted after this breakout, break and retest, we might be tempted to enter sales. Good not to do. Now let's see, are we resuming the bullish trend? Are we breaking above and then retesting for possible continuation up? That's the question. Now it's nice breakout. Yes, okay, so this is giving us our second chance of the, for buys. We are very close to the customer confidence, with half an hour. But yeah, we want to take the risk. Not really liking this price action because it can easily pop down. And yeah, okay, now that's certainly a loss. I want to also check the consumer confidence, how it came out. We'll see, no, was over here. Now let's check the consumer confidence. It was decreasing, la, 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 lower than expected and lower than prior. So we should be good. I mean, if I saw this number live, I'd say, yeah, nice. Now the God will move up and that's profitable for me, but looks like it is not. Let's, so we have these various PSAs so far. Let's see, let's see. Okay, it's getting late. I not really wanted to take a further trade. Yeah, there, there's not, there's not much momentum, but yeah. There was not really an opportunity. I mean, this retest of this area is not really relevant anymore. So yeah, now let's see. Yeah, it was just a, just a spike of volatility. There was no real setup over there. Now let's move on to the next one, which is the Wednesday, Wednesday, Wednesday. And let's see, Wednesday, the 27th of July. We are almost August, Jesus. So we have durable good orders and all these things. Ah, we also have the FOMC, ha, ha, very, very interesting. So we might not have any. we might not have any super relevant trending day. Right before FMC, so far, we have this PSA, we have this PSA, as always. Let's see if we ever get a retest of these lows before continuing down. Do we want to take this trade, yes, we need to, even though whatever it is, we need to take it. And we need to win, that's why, that's why we need to take it. Okay, so that's, that would be first win, we could already be, okay, yeah, that's okay, I will wait for the FMC, not really taking any further risk. Very good, safest, a trade idea would be over there, now let's see if we have further continuation down. This would be perfect retest, I would love to see some retest of these lows and market structure created. Very good, if now price is breaking above, we might have a buy situation. But since we are now simply grab the liquidity, if I was trading, they break, this trade would have been okay. End of pullback would have been over here now, uh it's late, but we might take uh a possible retest of these lows, for example, over here. Okay. I like this entry because it's retesting this last low, not this one. Let's see, yeah, we also have a nice continuation, one, two, three plus, so that should be a win. Very good. Great, that's actually great, so now, yeah, not really doing much. Coming into London close, let's see if there's a nice breakout also going up, might be. Yeah, but that's not really a trade uh opportunity, so two wins, that's absolutely gorgeous. And now we're coming into the FMC. I think, right? No, I didn't take it, okay, I didn't grab it, the Fed rated as expected seventy five base points. But I don't know the reaction of the market. And now we're coming on Thursday, full of data as well, jobless claims, GDP and PCE preliminary. Let's see it. Okay, this is New York open, coming into, okay, this is the news. Uh so we have uh worse than expected uh GDP, but still higher than previous one. Uh yeah, still good. PC is decreasing quite a lot, so we might, this might feed into the narrative of slowing a little bit down with the uh with the interest rate. And jobless claims, bad. The previous one were actually revised on the downside, which is good, but still the PC is quite tricky. I'm not really, um, I'm not really having an opinion on what the direction will be. So far, I see bullish bullish, let's see if then we get a retest of these eyes. It's very tricky, uh I know, I already see the next one, let's see if that actually ends up being a loss. Yeah, it's actually ending up being a win, let, I will check it. So uh this is on the twenty sixth. We are now on the twentieth. Okay, twenty six uh over here. Twenty six, twenty six, twenty eight. Okay, twenty eight, and this was the FMC. Good, very good, clean, break and retest of these eyes and then continuation bullish, yeah, absolutely amazing. And yes, so now we have this news, so this one would have been our entry at the candle close. Damn it, would have been a loss, damn it, would have been a loss, shish. So that's okay. Damn it, good damn it. Buy one pip, now we have, having this retest, so I might take this continuation buy. Oof, and we are coming back from the death, very good, so. That's okay. Let's see if we have further continuation, now actually price is sort of retracing, we don't have a retest of these lows. So there was no even entry, let's see now if we are retesting these lows, which might also now be creating a new market structure. Not giving me opportunity of a retest, I would say, and after all this perception and bouncing on the same level, I'm not taking this sell. And that's not anymore a break and retest. But let's see now, the possible next price action, this might look as a buy. Do we want to take it as a buy or is a retest, is actually not, is actually this retest, so. Here is uh something that I should not even trade, because it can be both, we are testing these highs, but we are also testing these lows. So what do I do? Uh, I go, I trust this one, on the sell side. Very good, yes, so that's very bad. Trust the lower timeframe always, trust the always, the all lower timeframe, as you can see, we are testing the last lows, last ice, that's perfect, muh, that's a shift kiss, this is a end of pullback and I just said I don't trade end of pullback, Stefano, come on. So now we are seeing boom, 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 we have the retest of these eyes. Which is also these eyes, so that's our possible further trade idea, I don't know if we're going to win or lose, especially coming into New York Stock Exchange opening, let's see. I don't want to spoil myself, so I want to see it in the further slide and let's see now. Oh gosh, yeah, no. Twenty eighth, so we saw this buy over here. We said, we took it, not really sure where it's going, where are you going? Bouncing again, okay, yeah, enough juice to go to my TP, that's what I want to see. Perfect, now uh do we want to risk some profits, taking some sales below these lows? Or safely below these lows? That's quite interesting, I would say. Are you retesting it? Ah, nah, too late, nah. No entry, so uh let's see if we have a retest of these eyes for buys. Okay, so it's difficult to do in live trading to stay focused on the buys after all these uh candles, but that's what the backtesting is helping me with and also, yeah, it's okay to take a loss, it's okay, it's okay. That's fine, and yeah, oh now what do I want, I would love a retest of this same PSA for possible sales. Uh the old lows are these ones, so that's where we might have the possible continuation. This will be the retest, it's still the end of pullback, so not really something that I want to take. And now I will validate any entry with the confirmation that these lows are relevant. Uh yes, so that's basically it. Without basically, that's it, haha. So now let's continue with the next one, wow, today is a marathon, not really. Because it's just two weeks, but it's quite dense. Dance, 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 it's the same day. And coming into the twenty ninth of July, which is the Friday, okay, PCE, oof, oof, I'm tired guys. Are you not tired, guys? I am tired, guys, so PCE, PTT. Okay, obviously not taking any trade before the news, this is the last high, these are the last lows, so let's see. Uh PC coming more than expected. More than expected, which feeds a uh narrative of, okay, guys, we need to raise rates. At zero point five, zero point seven, whatever, so now we might want to take this sell. And we might want to take that loss, yeah, we might. I think we might, now let's see if we are breaking below these lows. Hmm, what are we doing now, huh, tell me, tell me, what are we doing now? Okie dokie, dum 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 dum, okay, possible buys above here. We don't care about you anymore, I'm sorry, and still the sales below this lows, why are we in such a range? On a Friday, okay, quite weird, we are coming towards, uh what was it? Purchasing, purchasing managers index, Chicago. And Michigan was represented at four. So let's see, New York Stock Exchange might open uh soon. Okay, it's actually opening over there, so. Now that is opening, of course, these lows are old AF. We have these lows for possible sales, better if we retest these lows even, let's see the price action. Okay, yeah, this candle is retesting that, so we might have, uh might take this entry. And hoping uh that we lose. So we hope well, we hope fine, and that's okay. Now let's see, the news was, this one was bad, which should be bullish for gold, this one was light good, which is bearish for gold. So let's see what the market is choosing to push, now we are retesting these lows. Of course, now if I was in live trading, I would not be, because I said, damn it, I don't want to take this trade, because I already took two losses, yada, yada, yada. And yeah, that probably would have been the good idea, because the price action is very, very garbage. So now let's see. Oof, the last hour of Friday. So now the data is coming up, we said, we saw a mixed data, we have these last lows. Tom, last eye, tom, tom, let's see, do we break above and are we testing, yeah, retest these highs. As you can see, the last highs were this. Hopefully, we go into profits. Ah, push it, yes. It's always good to finish off the Friday with a win, if it's good and that's okay, yeah, do whatever you want. Okay, great. So uh we just did the last two weeks, was quite exhausting. I hope you enjoyed and I see you tomorrow.